Kevin Peterson gets out of tents with those guys. Tested positive COVID, you're like, okay Kevin.
Kevin?
Kevin Peterson, yeah.
He has it again?
Last week, yeah.
My sister just told me her colleague got it for the fifth time. This is a doctor who, fully vaccinated, has everything.
But, highly intensely infected environment probably.
Yeah, probably.
Well, his immune system could be a little wacky.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like it, or susceptible to.
Here's Bob Ross again.
Yeah.
Based on my research, I have absolutely no idea.
You're really saying I'm getting in more trouble?
I know it, I know.
But you're in luck, I think it's.
There's a variation in humans as well.
The minutes, and I have a few, you know, really minor things. I'll just go over them.
Hey John, can you hear me?
No, who is that?
I can't.
Could you, could you speak a little lower? I can still hear you.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, you're coming through loud and clear.
Alright, okay.
Trying to connect to the TV, but it doesn't seem to want to, so.
Yeah, you're just, you're just on audio.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, it's a great, great connection.
You don't have to put any clothes on, that's good.
Yeah.
Things come apart quite easily, especially this one here.
I have him on, I'm just trying to basically cast my, my screen to the TV.
Oh, it's a little dim.
They're gonna come for Rich.
Yeah, did you get a funny story?
They're coming to take him away, ha ha.
In one of the select board videos that I, that I recorded, Bob Ross was playing like this. And they sent me a nasty gram. This is not a strike, but just so as you know, we recognize there's copyrighted material. And they, they identified, would show all this.
Right, right.
It's like, whoa.
Alright, so members of the public present, Laurie Wadsworth, comma, at a comma. At item two, second line, verse, versus us.
Yeah.
And then the other possible locations, comma. And let me know when you're ready.
Say that again, just.
The versus, versus?
Yep.
And then, right after that versus, the other possible locations, comma.
Okay, got it.
And then if you go down to the next, whatever, section. I guess four lines down, the locations of the tractors, trackers in the trench. The boards, that should have an apostrophe. Boards consensus. And then finally.
Yeah, I haven't.
Oh, sorry.
There it is. Got it.
And then finally, same section, second to last line, it should be, E, according to Rich Maggie, EJ Prescott.
Okay. And then I get here to, item three, on the common, common should be capitalized. And then, that, next paragraph, one, two lines up, therefore, the, the, the should be removed.
Yeah, and, and I had a question about Vicky's. What, Vicky, it says she suggested that the board review the uses and add solar isn't allowed use, is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because it's not allowed use in the state's district?
Okay.
Or any district.
True.
Okay. So anybody got any other stuff? Alright, what?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. So, I'd like to move the minutes as amended by David Kahn and John. And, is there a second? Vicky seconds it, all those in favor? See, I can see Tim's hand is up.
It was.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so, so that's unanimous. So, we're done with that, which is exciting. And we move on to the dear zoning board. So, what do people?
I thought it was fine. No, no, he does need for a check from the board.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Well, go ahead, Evie.
I don't remember discussing follow-up assessments, we'll ask a couple sen- sentences about the follow-up.
Yeah, actually, Vicky brought it up.
And, and you decided that that was what? I mean, it's sort of, it's sort of one of those, who's gonna do it and how do you enforce it?
It's a suggestion, they don't have to listen to us. But, I was going by what was suggested, and when Vicky suggested it, there was, it seemed to be general agreement.
Okay. I don't think it's a bad idea, I just didn't remember much of a discussion. As a, as a parent, you try not to say rules that you can't make sure something happens, so.
Yeah, well, then we might as well do away with all of the zoning because.
Well, the zoning board can do a condition of, you know, approval that David go out a year from whenever and inspect it. And if it's found to be not okay, then they need to.
I know, it just, it just needs all of that piece flushed out.
Well, hopefully that's what they put in their decisions.
Can I make one more suggestion?
Sure.
The FGLD, state is already working with specialist EI Prescott.
EJ.
I got the EI for the.
Yeah.
So, if we change that to EJ.
Yeah.
Oh, it is EJ.
Yeah, well, that's what Rich Maggie wrote, wrote in, so.
I'll double check and.
Yep.
Yeah, because there, there are multiple Prescotts in that area, who are, who are specialists.
Alright, I will get this to the.
John, I just had a.
Go ahead. Yeah.
It may not be appropriate, but I was wondering if, if we could add, put something there to suggest that the ZBA looks at it in person? I mean, is that? Is that appropriate? I don't know. You know, suggest maybe, suggest maybe that they actually see it on the ground.
Well, I mean, it's already, we already stated that the planning board went there, I mean, if that doesn't.
Right.
Yeah.
Make it big enough.
Well, that's what I mean, maybe because we went there, it'd be nice if they also did.
It would be nice, I, I'm.
I bet they do.
I imagine that we, we put in that we went, this kind of suggests that we thought it was a good idea. But we can't.
Yeah.
Oh, well, what does everybody think?
I think this is fine as is.
Okay, anybody?
I would hope that they had a practice that they would go out and visit every site, so I'm gonna assume that that's what they do.
Okay, yeah.
Don't wanna presume that they don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can get to the point where we're being overbearing, so. I think this is okay. Alright, so do we need to make any sort of a vote, or?
No, you, at the last meeting, they, the board had said to go ahead and have you write it.
Okay.
This just.
This just does it.
Yeah.
Alright, so now we're back to where we always go, and David, maybe you can bring us up to date on the non-movement of our mailing?
So I've been trying to get this printed, and between not being able to get the post office to get me the numbers, and then just lack of response from Staples, they do not do this stuff in-house. It's done through their corporate office, which I have no idea even where the person I'm talking to is. They do take a lot of vacation time. And then they send it off to a third party.
Why don't you just take it to Noman?
Because we have had terrible luck recently with Noman.
Well, they, you send a digital file and they do whatever you want.
But we've also had.
How recently, David? Last summer, they were catastrophically understaffed. In the last month, they've been extremely responsive.
I can, you know, I'm, right now, I have, I'm waiting once more, I talked to the lady again today. They were having trouble understanding that the post office wanted two separate envelopes, one for line center zip code, one for the rest of line.
Yeah.
And I think I got them to understand that today. And if they fail, then I will print that, because it's only forty.
Yeah, we, we can't wait.
Do we need to change the date in the letter then?
We're gonna have to.
It has been.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
To what?
Be the first meeting in October. Or the week before the first meeting in October.
So, and we also have, because we thought we'd be counting on the twenty-fifth.
I, yep, we need to.
So, we need to figure out where that counting meeting should be.
Yeah, but, I'm hoping to be able to give them the go-ahead tomorrow, if I get, I was hoping to get the response back today, but.
So I, I would just suggest that, considering the possibility, if there's another, you know, if there's, they come up with something else, then let's just switch to.
We can try Noman.
Yeah.
The other thing is, it's close to seven hundred dollars to do this. And that's not including postage, so we're gonna be looking at over a thousand dollars for this mailing. I should be able to find enough stuff in my budget to cover that.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we don't spend any money on the planning board, except for.
Well, you don't have any money to spend.
Yeah, so.
So, I have to find it in my budget.
I think that, you know, people on, I don't know anybody on the select board, but I've, I've heard, I've heard that there is a select board. And it's kind of like Oz, you know, you, it's, and I, and I think if we can get in there, they'll listen to us. And they'll send us home to Kansas, so.
Did I, did I send you the word file, or did you?
I just modified the PDF.
Okay, you have Adobe.
Of course I do.
Editor.
Can't live without it.
Yes, right. I would say, David, I would, it certainly makes sense to just ask Noman and see what they do.
I can check with them, like I said, last time, we, and that was last summer, Matt was trying to get the dump stickers done.
Yeah.
And it was a four-month process, and they insisted on half of the payment upfront, just slightly before they were willing to even start anything. So it was a very negative experience, and.
Well, now, now there's. Go out of the hole now.
They're, they're out of, okay, that's good, you know, because it was.
They were terrible, I mean, I wanted something that's like, can you guys even do this? Oh yeah, we'll get to it.
Well, now they have competition for terrible, so if, but let's get, let's go with the least terrible.
Would much rather go to Noman, because Staples is going to ship me everything when they're done. They want payment upfront, and if it's wrong. Then, and I, my confidence level in Staples is not high.
Yeah, no, I'm fine, yeah, I'm in the Noman camp.
So I can start over again and try Noman.
You, you're expecting a confirmation tomorrow?
Yep.
Call Noman anyway, I mean.
Yeah, well, whatever, you know, we'll leave it.
They, they stuff envelopes, I mean, they do, they do these special things.
Right, well, that's, I was hoping that it was going to be the local Staples that was going to take and handle all this, and.
No, they're sending it to Thailand.
I have no idea, but they're, I have a feeling that it's not even gonna touch anybody in Staples, it's going to their third-party.
Yep.
Person, and they're going to be the ones shipping it to me afterwards. So we probably can get stuff, if Noman can go sooner, we could probably.
So, yeah, so check it out and just go with whatever, because we, we just can't, we're already really late. So, anybody who can do it fastest?
Yep.
So, apropos to that, it's, we're gonna be rushing this again, and we're probably gonna have to have extra meetings, is my best guess. We, once, because once we get the answers, we're gonna have to analyze them and adjust everything, and then go, you know, have our discussions. So just, kind of a heads up for people to, to be prepared. So, are there any sugge-, everybody?
Worth showing up for, after all this work?
Yeah, of course, of course. So, we, we have at least a template. I don't know how applicable it'll be, anybody got the copies of where we were last year? So, once we get the, and we, and add up all the results from the mailing, we can, we can just take it from there. But is there any, anything we can do before we have a whole meeting here? What can we do tonight that can?
Well, you wanted to talk about.
Oh, yes, the conservation.
Conservation.
Ricky, you had.
Yeah.
Thank you for, thank you. So, yeah, let's do, let's do that precisely. So the discussion about how we're gonna handle conservation districts, whether we want to add the ability for, what, for special exceptions, for?
Or anything by right.
Or anything by right. So, let's go over the conservation districts, which are page something.
Twenty-six. Or no, no, that's, that's too slow.
Page fifteen, yeah, starts at fifteen. Three point two seven is the, sort of the developing stuff.
I think it makes sense to go district by district, you know, not.
So, you mean, three two seven is the overall, and then, so we can start with wetlands?
Yeah.
Okay, what do people think about wetlands?
Where are you starting? Oh.
Page fifteen, three two seven one.
Mountain forests not count, or just add?
That's a.
That, that's a.
Zoning district.
Zoning district.
I don't know why it says conservation.
It says conservation district.
Well, that's wrong.
How am I supposed to know that, John?
You just asked questions.
Oh my god.
Alright, so can you mark that as a correction?
Yeah, I can.
What is it? The, the mountain forest has conservation in it, it's not a conservation district. So wetlands, people's thoughts?
And it appears multiple times in that paragraph.
So, okay, good, great.
Yep.
So, throughout, David?
Yeah, well, that, I need to look at how that was done, and you may need to do it through a, the ordinance.
Are we gonna go back to the history?
If we need to amend it, we will do it.
Yeah.
You gonna go back to the hysterical record?
Yes, and see when it was put in, and if it was put in that way, then, and if that was on the warrant.
Then it'll have to be changed later on.
Yes, I'll have to go through, tell me.
I was thinking about allowing, where you couldn't put a driveway through, I feel like, in that same disturbed area, you'd find to put trenching, or, you know, say you had your, your solar tracker down the hill from your house, but if you could put the trench in the same, you know, area that was disturbed for the wetland, disturbed for the driveway, then I'm okay, you know, so it could go into the same disturbed area as, say, your driveway.
So how would you write that? I mean, just, I'm not saying, you know, specifically.
But that's, that's the idea, I don't know how I'd look if I write it, it's just an, an idea that, you know, it would be, like, some place.
So it would follow something that had already happened, it wouldn't be?
Or was going to happen, you know, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be a new trench, it would be in the same disturbed area.
Okay, Tim?
So, Vicky, you're saying the solar panel would not be in the wetlands, but the trench, just for the trench for the quarry?
Yep, yep, just, just as a starting point for conversation.
Okay, thoughts?
And, so, in the, the wetland setback, would the panels be allowed in that setback? You can put a driveway through a setback, for example. And it's a special exception, but, and it's currently limited to eighty, eighty percent of the, the setback.
What, are you talking about, maybe, I think I'm.
Well, there's a wetland buffer, I think it's up here.
You're talking about the hundred, hundred-foot buffer zone?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's, I think, different than the measurements, with the eighty percent.
Well, okay, so then maybe I need to get tuned up on, on what the wetland buffer, the hundred-foot buffer.
So I, I think, I think, and I know I'll be corrected by people more expert than me when I'm wrong, but I think we're talking, when we're talking about a wetland, we're talking about what is specified as a wetland
Yes.
in and of itself, and then there's a hundred-foot buffer zone.
Yes, and so, three twenty-seven dot one talks about both.
Right.
And so.
Right, then you have, when you're doing the calculations for lot size, you take a hundred percent of the wetland and then eighty percent of the buffer, the area, and that's what your reduction.
You excluded that, yes, yes, right. But also, so your, your points will take you, Vicky, if you can put a driveway, I know you can put a driveway in the wetland buffer, and so, could that fill the entire, the driveway fill the entire, well, not, clearly not the full hundred-foot? How, how would that be regulated? I guess that's the question I should ask, so.
Would need to come in for review, I mean, I'm okay with it being administrative thing, as long as we can write it clearly and not a, if somebody already has an approval for driveway to go through, which is a lot worse because of the contaminants that come off a car.
Sure, right.
And if you salt your driveway or sand it, and all that gets thrown into the wetland, to the wetland buffer, I'm okay with a ditch that, you know, your, your connection between the tracker or your, you know, on the ground, things go to, you know, to wherever. I'm okay with that, because that's, there's a little bit of disturbance, and then it's filled in, and, okay.
So that would just be for the trenching, it wouldn't be for component, for the actual panels?
That's just a conversation starter.
But I mean, what, from what you're saying?
That, that's, so can we start there?
Yeah.
So, right, I certainly have no qualms about running a trench through either.
And is that something you wanna do administratively, so that it would just be up to David to say, yeah, that's pretty much where the driveway is, and, so they don't need to go to the zoning board?
I think so, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna put too much in people's way. You know, David's gonna review it.
Yep. Well, if they've been nice enough to put their panels or the tracker outside of the wetland in the wetland buffer, I'm okay with their trench going in it.
So, you said that, that where, where there's an existing driveway, or where there's a planned dr-?
Yeah, for a planned driveway, yeah.
Or even, I mean, a trench, it's, you know, it's one and done, and then they're gonna restore it to whatever shape it was.
I'm.
They might bring EC fiber up.
I'm bringing, I'm suggesting that they do it in the same disturbed area, and that we don't create two disturbed areas. But, I mean, that's just opening up for discussion, I.
Yeah, I would, I would think that, you know, when you create a trench for, you know, utility, you're gonna maintain that areas so that you can access it if you ever have to do repairs. You're not gonna just let everything re- grow over it, because, you know, at some point in time, you know, this is New England, rocks get pushed up and break lines and break conduit, and, and if they, you know, do a direct bury, then they're risking, you know, the rocks coming up from frost, so, you know, you're never gonna go back to the original. So, I think, I agree a hundred percent with Vicky, that putting it along an existing driveway is a better way to go, because you'll be able to maintain it in the future without more disturbance.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, it's, it's a nice, a nice way to do it. Yeah, Tim?
I agree with, I agree with that also, but I don't remember, does an applicant have to go to the ZBA to put a driveway across a wetland buffer?
Yes.
So they have to go to the ZBA anyway, so that, yeah, okay.
But.
Well, they've already done it, I'm, I'm saying, this is a situation where they've already.
You're talking existing constructions.
It's either planned, or they've already done it, and so they should have an easy out.
They've already got, they've already got permission, right?
Right, right, and clearly, if the tracker is somewhere, there's gonna be some amount of trench that will have to connect up to where the driveway is. So, I mean, you know, as long as that's minimized.
I would assume that you're not gonna put, since you can't put the tracker or a ground-mounted system in the wetland, or the wetland buffer, so.
Well, okay, you, it's physi-, it's technologically possible.
Yes.
Because most of Hanover's panels up on grass road are in wetlands.
Well, I understand it's technically possible, but under the zoning.
Not, not what.
That was a town-sponsored.
That was a municipal project that did not get a circular review.
We're not talking about municipal project.
And they had to finesse the DES.
Yeah, so anyway, that sounds elegant, I would say.
Can you run buried power on new construction through wetlands?
No, because you're gonna have to trench, there, you know, you could.
Because you're saying you can get one for a driveway.
Yep.
Can you not run your power?
Well, you can, again, you can go to the ZBA and get, you know, say you're gonna intrude in the wetlands. But I think, you know, it would either be crossing something, or, you know, it could, putting power through an area that is wet is not a smart idea.
Well, actually, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna point to what we did at the lodge, which we had horizontal boring done.
Right.
And it was the most astonishing thing, they, they went seven feet under the ground, under a stream.
But you still had to get the approval for that.
DE, uh, yes, ZBA and DES also wanted to get their chop line.
Sure, yeah.
So it's technically feasible to do in a wise and careful way, but there's a bunch of approvals. And that's interesting, if, do we even, do we, the planning board and the ordinance even care if somebody ditches on, if somebody completely bores under and makes the DES and the ZBA happy? I, I'm just throwing that out as a question.
Well, the ZBA, that's fine, they're already going to the ZBA.
Right, you went to the ZBA.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, I don't go to this anyway.
Right, so, I guess, I guess I asked the question wrong, does the ordinance, do the words, the ordinance need to observe that? It's a wetland, it would be some kind of wetland crossing.
Relative to what?
Well, I think it's something that need, you know, it's gonna go to the ZBA because how you do it is going to matter. You know, in your case, you did horizontal boring underneath.
Right.
And you had studies from an engineer saying, if we go seven feet.
Right.
We're gonna be underneath all of that, and there's not gonna be an issue. When you have somebody say, I'm just gonna hire an excavator to dig his way through that.
Right, that's a, that's a very different process.
That's a very different process. And so.
Okay.
I think that's why it's important for ZBA to review, to be able to look at that and say, oh, wait a minute, that, that, you know, you're gonna be driving a twenty-nine-ton vehicle.
Yeah, exactly.
Through a sensitive area, and no, we, we're not gonna allow that.
Yep.
Versus, we're gonna set on either side of it and drill underneath it.
So, how, so, how can, what words can we write to give good guidance to the zoning board? I guess that's the.
Um, I think they have, you know, the, the wetlands.
Well, did you get a special exception?
I think you gotta, or is there variance?
I'm gonna guess it was a special exception, I don't think it was a variance.
Because of, of the variance, that we don't need to do anything. But with a special exception, they have all of that guidance.
Yeah, I think they're.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe we don't have to.
I don't think so.
We don't need to say anything about it.
No, I, I think, you know, you can add the allowance for trenching along an existing driveway.
Yeah.
Perfectly acceptable.
And, and that could be. And, and that could be administrative.
Right, yeah, that could be.
That's what we're angling for, because that, that.
Yep.
If it's already disturbed or going to be disturbed.
Yep.
Okay, so, steep slopes, or does people have more?
So, I think there are two questions, one is the trenching that will occur for anything, and then the second question is where can the panels themselves be sited?
Right.
So, so you want to start with our trenches in all the conservation districts first and then come back to the others?
Why don't we just go from conservation district to conservation district and, because we might have different issues and.
Sure, right.
So, can I just say, I think that if you're trenching, you should be allowed to put your line fiber in there, your power. It should be an omnibus kind of trench thing.
It's just a trench, I mean.
Yeah, so, it's sort of an omnibus.
Yeah.
We can add.
If you look at four, six, one, on page twenty-nine, item B four, you will allow, the zoning ordinance allows wells and water lines.
Right.
And so you could.
In, in the wetlands?
In the wetlands.
Yeah.
Yeah, with special exceptions, so we could just add.
But that's also, you know, with review of the Conservation Commission.
Right, but don't we want to have a, like a trench freebie where if it's a long and existing fermented thing, like say, they want to lay it in the same area that's been disturbed for the water line, that we would allow that to happen and just administrative review?
Yeah, we could do that.
So.
But we, I mean, probably based on what we were just talking about, the omnibus thing, we would want to add language here for, for other things.
Again, look at B three, says accessways which meet the conditions of section four, five, three, which are, that, that's the driveways. And writes a way for overhead power lines, telephone lines located and corrected so as to cause least reasonable practical damage to the wetland. You could add in there.
Buried lines.
Buried lines along the accessways.
Yeah.
Or you're going to say buried utilities along the accessways.
Well, yeah, I don't know, utilities usually think that there's a provider and doesn't necessarily cover like a, I, I don't think a, your own thing.
So what would you call it, buried?
Service. Services for.
Buried service.
Yeah, or solar energy system, yeah.
Well, but would we not allow buried water and/or septic lines if?
That's what we're, I don't know, would we?
Well, wells and water lines are also, look at item four, they're covered.
They're already there.
Right.
And septic.
It's a little different when you get into water anyway.
Well, you, you start running into the state.
Right.
Regulations and they don't allow it.
Right.
So, I would stay away from any specific things that deal with septic that may interfere with state rules.
Tim, did you, did you want to say something?
Not really, I was just going to say.
Oh, I thought you.
You have to go down a lot deeper, not that that matters too much, we have to go down four feet as opposed to two feet.
Uh huh, okay. All right, so we're talking about possibly having the, the trenching as a relation to solar as administrative where existing driveways are, and then an omnibus to, four, six, one, B four mostly for other services. So, I mean, we're, we're not going to nail everything down.
I'd say buried service including for solar energy systems, is that?
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so, to your, to your question that you raised about whether the panels should go in the wetlands.
Let's, let, I, I just want to go back to this, buried services. What if you want to bury your electric, you know, you've got a pole by the street and you want to bury that?
Yeah.
Is that already covered here or?
No, because item three is, it allows for overhead, but not.
Well, why wouldn't that be included in, in the, we're talking about omnibus where there's an existing.
So, are we intending that omnibus would, would serve both trenching for solar panels as well as your primary electric feed as well as?
I mean, I was my.
I can't imagine that we would care.
Yeah.
We could allow one which would allow the whole.
If it, if it's, if it's already there and we're allowing a, why not?
Yeah, okay, so.
So what do people think about panels themselves?
Right.
In the wetlands? I'm not crazy about it.
No, I'm not, not, not happy to go there, but if somebody wants to propose something.
I, I think, when you look at the equipment you need to, if you're going to be setting posts or drilling in posts, the equipment you need to drill that is going to be, have to be, you know, tracked. Stuff that's going to tear up, you know, I, I think the construction, you're looking at making a huge mess.
Yeah, I, I agree.
You know, disturbing and already fragile, you know, you're going to be compacting the soil that's trying to absorb water.
So, all right, so it doesn't look like there's a lot of enthusiasm for that, so shall we go on to the steep slopes?
Yes.
So, let, let me ask the same question about the wetland buffers.
Okay.
So, could, could you put, you know, the wetland buffers are frequently pretty dry soil. Could you put the, put solar panels in that buffer, you can run a driveway there?
Not a fan myself.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of, but if, if your, if your driveway has been approved and it goes into the buffer. I know, you already, I mean, that's like a pre-existing.
Yeah, but you're not going to put your panel right next to your driveway.
Oh, 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 the panel, I thought you were talking about the trench.
No, 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 I, I moved up to the panel.
Yeah.
And, you know, but there's all these different geometries that we have to think about, is, you know, if your driveway skims just in and out of the wetland buffer runs for, you know, a little bit, and then could you put the panels in the wetland buffer farther down, farther away? I mean, I'm just asking this question is.
That would keep it closer to the trench.
True, but that's not a goal, I mean.
Well, but it's.
Well, it's least disturbance.
It what?
It minimizes the trenching.
Yeah.
And it minimizes the wetlands.
Yeah, the wetlands are dynamic systems that, I mean, probably this year, what you didn't think was wet is wet, and having those buffers is really important not to. And the other thing is, you know, wildlife that rely on wetlands need an area to move in, so I'm also not thinking that solar arrays.
One of the other things, you, just looking at the, the panels around town, on the systems, you know, people maintain the, the area around the panels, they mow, and that's going to affect the effectiveness of the wetland buffer. I mean, the reason, or one of the reasons for the wetland buffer is to give water a chance to get to the, the wetland without impedance, without getting, going too fast, you know, there's.
But people aren't prevented from moing wetland buffers.
But you, no, there's, yes, right, so.
Well, there's a difference between not prevent, you know, between preventing and you know, disallowing the possibility.
So, I, let me state here, I'm, I'm sort of being devil's advocate.
Go ahead.
I don't see that there's a lot of interest in putting solar panels in the, in the wetland buffer.
Right.
No, in the wetland, I, that, that's, um, do you have a sense in the wetland buffer, Vicky?
Well, I, I think it's probably going to be limited by, you know, somebody being willing to try. And the disturbance for a tracker might be more acceptable than putting a bunch of holes for a pan, a bunch of panels.
Although there's, there now, most of them are screw mounts.
Yeah.
You know, they're just screwing into the ground.
I don't know, I haven't, having been told that the land we had in North Side Route ten was wetlands, and you're kind of like, okay.
Well, but, you know, as, as Vicky said, these are dynamic, I mean, if you're in, in a drought, you're not going to find a lot of evidence, but in a really rainy time, it's a buffer for, so to give some play to the actual wetlands, it's not like the, you know, I mean, the wetland ends here and then there's no, from, from there it goes.
I understand.
So.
Okay.
You know, I, I'm not enthusiastic about that.
I, I don't have any.
Yeah, Tim.
Right, two sentences, I don't, I don't think it's good to put anything in the buffer either, to compromise the buffer area. As David said, you know, I mean, I agree with David, I just don't think it's, it's good, because we do need that in wet, in wet instances, so.
All right.
That's, that, that's fine.
That's a good discussion, we should, we should have it, so that we're clear about what we, we want to do. Are we ready for the steep slopes? Okay, thoughts, questions about the steep slopes when it comes to solar? I mean, it's, it's helpful that we just had a case.
Right.
It's, it's almost owning a steep slope myself. It's almost moot, because any solar company comes and looks at it and goes, no.
Yeah, except that we had a case where they.
Yeah, it was a flat spot though, yeah.
And I'm denying another permit because of steep slopes. This is actually for a ground mounted array. That they're asking to put in steep slopes, so. It's not just a single occurrence, now we've got two, which I cannot, huge amount, but you know, we're, we're, we're seeing it.
Well, we'll have them, we'll have them for, at least from time to time. So in the case, yeah, so, and Vicky, you brought up that, that the zoning wasn't clear.
Right.
I would not say that you're allowed to have solar energy systems in there, I mean, just looking at it, so.
So, I think the question that pops up is like, in that case, just for clarification's sake, so that we're not in a situation like that. Should we have language that, I don't know, how do you, how do you reverse engineer what, what that case presented? Which was a small intrusion into, into a flat area, which we thought was okay, because it was so much better cumulatively than the alternatives.
Well, I mean, part of the reasoning was because it was so disrupted already, and that was because nobody ever told Ralph Celestis that he couldn't do what he absolutely did, you know, because there was no enforcement arm, so it's like, you know, it's a little thorny there, because he violated.
Yeah, we can't, there's no point in us going, well, we're not going to say something because it might not be enforced. That's not.
No, but I'm just saying, you have to get the whole context of why we thought that that was a better solution.
So, I mean, forgetting how, how it happened.
But you can't.
It wa- it was already the, a disturbed area.
But you can't, because that means it.
Can't what?
You can't just forget how it got there, because that means people will go in and do whatever the heck they want, and two years later.
How would you write that, if you violate the zoning, you will not get a, I mean.
Well, I mean, there's, my, my moral compass is spinning here.
Okay, well, how do you, how would you, how would you address that?
Well, I mean, ecologically, I feel like steep slopes are less valuable than wetlands. So we sort of have more of an open mind to.
No, no, but I mean, you, you are concerned about.
Well, that's why I'm saying, maybe we could say that it's all right to do in, in the steep slope area, and then we would not have to deal with that whole problem.
But you also just brought up that, well, then people will just do it and then say, hey.
Well, no, 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 I, I don't think that's what he'd be saying, I think he'd be saying that maybe we should just say, yes, you can put it on steep slopes. I think the, or the thoughts that we included about erosion control.
Yes.
Are critical.
Yes.
You know, if you do, and, but if there's a steep slope and it has a good southern exposure, maybe we should permit, maybe we should.
So, there are steep slopes and then there are steep slopes, so.
Like whole sledge and.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
But wouldn't it be a special exception here?
It'll be whatever we, we would say, but I, I would be. Let, you know, we're, we're writing this, I'm just trying to think. If we end up with larger rays, this would apply to them. And I don't want to open up the door, I mean, to me, the, the, the small intrusion in the, in the last case, we had, you know, makes sense for all the reasons we discussed and wrote about, but we're, we're talking about potentially some major disturbance.
Well, we're already dividing, I mean, we, we've got the stuff that's already allowed by right, right? The trackers and the house mounted things, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we could just apply, you can put a tracker in a steep, steep slope for it.
So, if, if we, if we had the two thousand square feet and somebody says, I want to put two thousand square feet into steep slopes.
Is that still under the side, the approval that, you know, the rooftop and side, the trackers?
Yeah, I mean.
Is that still?
Nothing, we haven't passed anything, but that's, that's.
Would it be grouped with that, I thought that was still?
I would, like I say, right now, I would group it with, you know, any structure that you wanted, you know, it's, it's no different to me than a shed.
Right.
So, the problem I'm having is, is with, and David, you and I talked about this, where, where there are these situations where people want to put up a track, a tracker.
Right.
Or a couple of trackers, and it's, you know, it's going to go into a little bit of the ag soils or a little bit into that. Those are things which I think, you know, let's find a way to, to allow that, but when it starts to potentially apply to larger arrays, I don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm thinking steep slopes allow the smaller stuff, like you're talking about.
So, I'm open to it, but I don't know how to write it yet.
I wonder if you want to, you know, one of the things for steep slopes is the planning board review and comment. Do you want to, I know, you don't want to, but put it back on the planning board to review?
You know, realistically, the, the planning board's going to change, the zoning board's going to change.
Kind of really doesn't matter what the planning board says anyway.
Yeah, I, I would leave it as is.
I mean, I, I had a question, so we allow telecommunications facilities on steep slopes?
Yep.
And under, what are the standards, I don't have a copy of that ordinance.
I don't have it with me right now, I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, I mean, that's a kind of a big disturbance, though, it's usually only one, you're putting up a tower.
Oh, okay, so a telecommunications facility is typically a tower.
Tower, yeah.
There may be a hut at the base of it or something like that.
Yeah, there's the generator and, and stuff, yeah. But we allow that, so, I don't know if there's a limitation on size on that.
Well, whether there is or is, whether there is or there isn't, I would want a limitation on the size. In, I mean, I don't want a huge intrusion on the steep slopes.
Yeah, you'd just be drilling into ledge and cut a whole hillside, that's not weird in mind.
Well, you can't, on a hill, you, a tracker can't put on too steep a hill because it, it needs to be able to.
Somebody might try.
Yeah, but what if there's a little bit of a fix thing?
Yeah, there could be a fix one.
A whole fixed array, and, you know, so there's structures that's allowed by the telecommunications facilities ordinance. And I just wonder, I mean, I can see where they might have to go, I mean, they really should go onto rooftops, not steep slopes, but yeah, what, what circumstances would be there?
It's conceivable the most advantageous place is near the top of the hill, but it's steep right there, remember, I'm, I'm making.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
So, maybe. Maybe, you know, as we think about this, maybe we should just put it all on a special exception to say if you wanna do.
Just back up a second. When you say put it on, what are you talking about?
So maybe the constraint that we're thinking about for any of, for putting a tracker or putting any solar system, this energy system into a conservation district is that it be by a special exception because if we're gonna put it along where the driveway is, that's gonna be a special exception.
I think that's what general, I mean, we'll see, but I think that's generally what we're talking about.
And and maybe we don't have to get, I mean, it's useful to say, yeah, not in the wetlands. And we're saying not, you can put your trench in the wetland buffer, but not the panels in the wetland buffer.
And then we were thinking of adding to the criteria the allowable things via special exception in four, six, one, B three. This is going back to the wetlands. So we, I I mean, my impression is we're gonna look at each of these and and see what we can do via special exception.
That was premature optimization. Never mind. I'll withdraw that thought. I'll go back to it.
Okay.
John, it seems.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, it seems the issue is the erosion, obviously, right?
Yes.
It seems that if somebody wanted to put in a larger array, if they could do it so there was no erosion and it could be checked, you know, every year or whatever, as we're doing with this other with Hartman's. I guess my feeling is that I wouldn't mind seeing, you know, larger solar rays on steep slopes as long as there's no erosion, you know, as long as it can be kept from eroding at all, you know.
So how how would you know that it wouldn't do that?
Well, I think it would be just similar to what we just did with um with the Hartmans, you know, I mean, we're gonna check, we're gonna make sure that that doesn't erode, hopefully.
Yeah, but again, the Hartman's, the Hartmans wasn't a one acre array.
No, true, but I'm just saying if it could be done so that there was no erosion.
I don't think it can be done.
Yeah, I don't think it can be done. It it's different, it's di- with the with the Greg Hartman's, it was a s- a small, what, two trackers, I think.
Right, no, I understand that.
Anyway, I I just, I I disagree.
Right, so you're saying you think if it was a whole acre, then it would.
Well, we're we're talking about, we're talking about huge arrays on steep slopes. I don't think that's, I I don't wanna, excuse the pun, but I don't wanna go down that road.
Well, the other. See, you know.
You're just saying that it's possible, basically, to put those in and not have erosion.
No, I.
Well, I I would say you're asking for a visual problem because if you're denuding a steep slope to put a larger solar array, that's gonna be visible. And I think that that's.
What's the other issue?
That's our goal. Well, I think that that's a, you know, we're asking for people to have a visual problem, so. And I think in this conversation, we need to be clear about small systems and allowing the the Hartman's situation compared to a large system.
Because I I thought we were running a survey to see if we were gonna even approve large, large solar rays.
Yeah, well, that's the problem is.
So, I mean, why are you talking about it now?
Because it's, I think it's very likely that.
We might have to go right into.
We're we're.
We, you know, add to this.
I mean, I I don't understand sort of the, what we're doing here is getting ready for what the possibilities that the questionnaire will provide, so.
But it might be more expeditious at this point just to to go through these and decide what we think for small solar arrays.
Well, I think we said for small, you know, I said for small arrays, cer- certainly the size of what we dealt with last time, we can make exceptions.
The drafting problem is that we have not yet defined small or medium or large, so we don't have the terminology.
We don't have the terminology, but we have a reference point in that case. I mean, I know from from that that I'd be willing to do that.
Well, the other is that if the town is overwhelmingly in favor of large, then we're not giving them a whole package to vote on because if it's silent and they're not allowed in the conservation districts, that presents problems for a company that might wanna come in and do it.
Well, I think the results of the questionnaire are gonna have an influence on our final.
Yeah.
I would hope so.
Say it's overwhelmingly, yeah, I know, I really wanna.
I was just saying, if we could go through what we have here and talk about household sized systems in each of these districts.
So what do you define as a household sized system?
Well, I mean, like the two trackers that Greg Hartman put in.
But not like, no, I mean, how do you, we're, we have to deal with definitions, so if it's, we also have an existing language that says, you know, two thousand square feet that would be allowed on a on a residential site. So that's a lot different than the Hartman's case.
Two thousand.
Two thousand square feet of panels.
It's it's like, I'm just trying to do the math in my head. How 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 big is that?
Well, what what is the name of, five thousand two hundred, fifty thousand, fifty two.
Twenty by a hundred.
An acre is forty three, forty three, Joe.
Oh, forty three, forty three. So it's a tenth of an acre. No, it's it's less, it's a twentieth of an acre.
Yeah, I mean, it's, but it's, I think, a hundred by twenty. This room is twenty feet wide and probably not a hundred feet long.
Oh, let me run to my office and grab the the one I'm looking at now that I have to deny and I can tell you what. This is a house sized solar system. It's not.
And and this is ground matter.
This is a ground mounted system, so I can give you an actual example.
So I'm I'm just thinking, John, if we if we work through what we think about a smaller array, when we can then turn our attention to the larger one and decide what what the criteria are for making those distinctions and how to write it. If you try to eat the elephant one bite at a time instead of, you know, just like trying to consume the whole feast.
If we define it, then we can do that, but we have to define it.
Well, I mean, how how's, how big is the biggest household installation we've got at the moment?
I don't know, but it it's conceivably, it it won't be anywhere near that. But can, you know, under extraordinary circumstances, it can be, you know, half an acre, but I don't think that that'll happen.
Why don't we just use what we're, what we have here now, the two thousand square feet.
Well, we can, but we don't know whether that's, you know, I don't know how meaningful it's gonna be.
Well, I think what he'd be saying is let's just take something that's two thousand square feet.
Yep.
Up to two thousand square feet and and just.
Okay, I mean, we can do.
Cause lots of people would.
We can do that.
Then we go through the different districts and see if we feel differently about the different districts and if we feel that way about them at two thousand square feet, we're certainly gonna feel that way about forty thousand square feet, um and we wouldn't have to revisit it again.
That's, uh, how does everybody feel? You wanna use that as a criteria?
The two thousand, I'm happy working the book written, so.
The only thing that comes, that is a little bit troubling about that is that subsequently, when we go through and actually create a statute that has these definitions, now we've got two sets of definitions and we'll have to know to come back and visit this.
And then we're gonna come back and and this work may be meaningless.
No, I don't think so because I think we will have done the intellectual work of figuring out how we each think about things and identify the important aspects of each.
I think it's problematic if the board wants to, potentially problematic, not necessarily problematic, but um if the board wants to do that, so be it.
I mean, the other, one other alternative would be to just hold this in advance until we have finalized a set of uh, until we finalize a set of solar rules and then and then do this at the same time so that we have definitions that we can, we can.
I I let let me suggest a a different way because I think it is a valuable exercise to do this. I think there there are potentially three levels we can consider. Just the small intrusion like we, the case we had, and then, you know, the whatever, the the two thousand square feet or or whether we even have to say that, but but a larger, um but small, whatever, bigger, smaller intrusion. And then the larger ones. I think it's worth thinking about all three.
I I like not to separate the couple of trackers from the up to two thousand square feet. I think.
You like you like that because?
I just lump them all together. I don't think they're materially different.
I do.
Okay.
But that's that's just me. And rarely do people agree with me, so.
Right, I mean, he.
You don't like it, John, just 'cause you think two thousand is significant?
I think that there's a real distinction between the two track, let me put it this way. With the case where where we just had, if somebody, i- if if the system was gonna be two thousand square feet, I I don't think I would have, I would have been in favor of it. Whereas with just two things, I was in favor of it. Had the, that was a very steep site. There was a limited terrace. So I think there is a distinction, potentially. There may be cases where it doesn't matter very much.
So, I mean, we were prepared with, you know, the first, the small solar energy system, we were prepared to say anything up to two thousand square feet would be all lumped together, treated the same and and.
Yeah, but that's not in terms of conservation district.
So you want a, essentially, you want a a new definition for very small, which is.
Well, I don't, I don't know. I'm just, I'm going through this process. I'm not really thinking even what I want. I'm just noting uh from the experience of this last case that this is what makes sense to me. I I I can use that as a reference. I I had no problem with the two trackers in in that position.
Yep.
Two thousand square feet, I would have been concerned.
And.
Particularly because they were putting down, what was that? They were putting it, um, putting at the base.
Concrete pads.
Yeah, concrete pads and stuff like that.
Right, and I see, I see the distinction here too. The the amendment that we drafted before said if you could put a building here.
Exactly.
You can build it up to two thousand square feet. You can't put a building there, full stop. And what we're saying is, oh, wait, maybe it is valuable. I s- I see the distinction.
Okay.
It maybe it is valuable to allow them in a conservation district where otherwise we wouldn't allow you to put a shed.
Right.
And that, okay. David's still struggling with it.
Well, I'm just looking at the, correct, their tiny drawings.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so anyway, this array, there's sixty four um panels for a total of uh twelve hundred and seventy five square feet or just under.
Yep.
Sixty four panels.
So it's a, it's a fixed system and not.
Yeah, it's a fixed system.
So is is that lot, a lot, the footprint of of it?
Um, that's the the panel area, so it's not gonna be the footprint because they're gonna be set as.
Tilted.
They're gonna be tilted. I think they're um, yeah, they're gonna be tilted at a twenty degree angle.
So that, and they're fixed.
Yeah.
So.
But this particular system um is calling for two rows of panels. And I don't know, I haven't been able to find exactly, but they're going to be set with um concrete piers on steel posts. You're looking at a one foot hole diameter that's going to be five and a half feet deep filled with concrete.
Yeah.
On a steep slope.
Because that's not even two thousand square feet.
I wonder if that actually prevents erosion or makes it worse. In some ways, you know, you're, you've got this big thing going down into the rock or the the ground that maybe uh acts as a as a stop.
And and the basis for design.
Well, this one, uh, it sits in steep slopes and they're also putting it too close to the property line, so.
Okay, and just like.
So this one's going down in flames no matter what.
I don't think that is gonna protect the ax soils, that kind of a system. You know, we, like, that's kind of the system that somebody wants.
Oh, might put in, yeah.
Right.
You're talking about when we get to ax soils.
Yeah, just jumping ahead going, well, that's pretty disruptive. They're not gonna need five feet deep, but not like the ax soil, they're gonna bounce back from that installation.
So that they probably need to be that deep to keep it from.
Sliding down the hill.
Sliding down the hill, right.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's just not a good place to put your.
Why is it there? Why don't they have some other place on the property?
Um, I haven't even gotten into that with them yet. I just, you know, I'm looking at the the plan and.
Now you have us curious. Where is it?
Uh, this is Clover Mill Lane.
It's another, I don't wanna see it from my house. I'm really not the.
No, you won't see it from your house.
Not my house. They don't wanna see it from their house.
No, they they will see it from their house because it's only seventy feet from their house.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I I would have to look at the um, better look at the property, but um, there are a lot of things about this that just I question because when they're showing me in a map the the distance to the um, the solar panel from the property line, they don't measure the closest point.
Right. You know, who's the designer?
Uh, this is six oh three solar. Never heard of them before.
Yeah, it's just a good thing to try to work with the designers so they understand what we look for in our town so that the next one they do will be a lot easier for them to put together.
Alex, this is the first one I've gotten from them. And the fact that their locator map on the front page is south of Clermont. So uh, something doesn't quite.
Well, read the the notes too. It might not be site specific notes on the plan.
Well, it says vicinity map and lime is not even on the the.
Yep, okay.
So it's not even in the vicinity.
Yep.
So I'm not quite sure.
So so this, this particular system would have fit inside this if it were on flat land or something like that.
Right.
So, so this is.
That would be fine if it wasn't in steep slope.
Right, so I feel, I feel good about the two thousand square feet. There's just, you know, a ballpark number.
What's the rating of that system in terms of output?
I think sixteen kilowatt. It, oh, no, I'm sorry, uh, twelve point sixteen um kilowatt AC. No, it's twenty point sixteen.
Twenty point sixteen?
Twenty point sixteen, I'm sorry, my.
Twenty, okay, twenty point sixteen, okay.
So it's like twenty kilowatt?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay.
Well, it's just interesting to see what, you know, a typical house might be having, so.
It's a fairly large house.
Yep, well, many are in the town.
And um what I, I I'm still trying to understand what they they have given me for um plans because, you know, I'm not sure if they're including some battery systems here. There's some other stuff on the plan that I I don't know exactly what they're.
Well, an important thing to ask for is a construction sequence and erosion control plan and um you know, just, I, the question of access, I thought the Hartmans was like, are you kidding? That's gonna be really difficult to get the machinery on that slope, so put the pads in. Figure equipment, and so I think that that's a very legitimate question to ask of anybody.
Alright, so with the steep slopes.
Small system.
Small s- well, I would say small intrusions, I'm I'm fine with creating a carve out.
Sounds like a small system may be too big for a steep slope. If it's all located, I mean, just based on, that's a small system.
Exactly, yeah. Doesn't mean we can't come up with criteria for where a system of that size, well, no, I mean, for steep slope, yeah.
Is there some some part of it that could go on there, you know?
I don't know.
So maybe the the way forward here is to say part uh part of the question too is what's the town gonna say? If the town says, oh, yeah, put them everywhere, then that says we wanna make it possible, maybe we put it on steep slopes, but with really good erosion controls and and, you know, there's a special exception and and all that.
Well, I.
And and.
Yeah, I mean, it the question, we don't have a questionnaire, do you want them on steep slopes? Because it just gets too complicated.
Sure.
But if people are are super enthusiastic.
Well, that that changes our that changes our duty.
I I think so.
And so, I mean, I think I think he talked about the actual exercise of going through and considering these. I think maybe we're done with steep slopes, we say little ones, that's that's fine.
We agree about that, and and we're gonna we're gonna have we're gonna have to find a determinant based on feedback and our own interpretations um wh- where the line is.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
And then we can go onto shoreline.
Maybe what we need is a micro, a small, and a large, and forget the medium, you know, because
Maybe, right.
I think, you know, it's like.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, because allowing the Greg Hartman situation.
Uh, yep, maybe, that's interesting.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a a good way of putting it.
Just a thought.
So, uh, all right, so we're.
One of the other things that I I think the board really needs to look at is the steep slope conservation district is step-defined. It's very hard to um, you know, figure out where and and there.
So you're looking at the the which part before?
Well, if you look at page sixteen, Steve Slope's Conservation District is hereby defined as comprising all areas within which there is an elevation change of twenty feet or more and the average slope is twenty percent or greater.
Which is a hundred-foot span.
Right, the average slope, you know, so um trying to figure out if an area is within that district or not, especially if it's along the edge.
Well, you can move that hundred feet around, can't you?
Well, what I do uh for consistency is I look at where you're doing the development and I go fifty feet on either side of that development.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, and then look at the elevation change, but if you have a, you know, if your point of development is on a flat area and all of a sudden, you know, it goes up a, you know, forty percent slope, you can actually meet the criteria for steep slopes even though you're on a flat area. Which, you know, and and it says it right here that.
Which makes making it be an exception, a special exception to be renewed for the specifics of the plan.
Right, and that's um.
Yep.
An area that meets the foregoing criteria lies within the steep slope conservation, if even though maybe part of a larger area which has an average slope of less than twenty percent. So it's basically saying, too bad, you know, if if you get that elevation change and like I say, I I have chosen to measure that hundred feet, um fifty feet on either side, because I.
Well, that's fair.
Yeah, I I that's, yeah.
Well, should we should we put that in there? It shall be measured fifty percent, you know.
I I I think that leaving some discretion for a specific site review.
Right.
You draw the rules and then you have an intelligent administrator go out and look and say.
Well, I'm I'm asking because David was saying he had.
Well, just i- it's I don't know how else to define steep slopes. Because, you know, I I can take and I can calculate a lot, a lot where all the um slopes over twenty percent are, but uh you'll pick up all the uh the ditches along roads.
Right.
Because those are, you know.
So I I guess.
Yeah.
My question would be, do you have suggestions?
I do not, I just, you know, I I also think it's a good idea to periodically review.
Sam, yeah, sure.
I'm gonna have to get off, we gotta do some things here.
Okay.
Um, we came down in Nantucket to be with the hurricane, so we're, you know, I'll let you all know what it's like.
Oh, cool.
So, but I have to get off, unfortunately.
All right, well, thanks for joining us.
Stay safe, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I I would just as soon leave it up to David's discretion, not writing it in there.
Okay, I.
Because, I mean.
I only brought that up because David was saying that we should take a look at it.
Well, I just, I I think it's important that you all understand how this is calculated, that there are, it's not just a cut and dry, this is a steep slope.
Right, of course, so you have discretion.
Yep.
And uh is is there anything, I mean, what if.
If that discretion is applied inconsistently, that's when we get into trouble.
Right.
Well, that's why I've chosen to measure it the way I do, that way I can say, you know, here's where you want the development, we'll look at the center, we'll go up and down fifty feet and measure the, and that's what I did with the this one, I looked at the, you know, if you look towards the house, it's the slope flattens out, but if you get up behind it and it looks like.
So are you making the determination of whether they have steep slopes, or is that their consultant and then you're just re responding?
I do make the determination, um, a lot of times, I don't think that the people who are putting this in even look at the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, clearly.
Although, like I say, I I suspect the fact that they put the the distance from the property line not at the closest point. I think they may have at least looked at the setbacks and.
Looked at a way to get around.
But.
All right, so we're 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 agreed to leave the definition as is?
I think so.
Yep.
I'm happy.
Okay, so we we have a um a micro-sized exception and we'll get more detail later with the steep slopes. So now we're at the shoreline conservation district.
And shoreline is similar to the uh wetland, because it has a buffer.
Has it been a problem for anybody with the two hundred-foot setback from the Connecticut before?
No. We actually, it's kind of interesting that uh, you know, there's not a lot of development that's really close to the Connecticut, there are a few. But um much of the development is back and um when FEMA came through uh last summer and we looked at all the areas around the Connecticut, we found out that a lot of the areas that would be primed for development are under conservation easies and can't be developed anyway. Uh, what were their ag soils? And so trying to have people develop close to the river just doesn't work out well.
These days, not a good idea anymore.
No, it's not a good idea, um, there was one.
It's John Luge.
Exactly, yeah.
Where's?
He's up uh just north of.
The East Setford Bridge?
Yeah, the East Setford Bridge, I think he's lost thirteen acres of land due to erosion.
The East Setford.
So on the riverside, if you go, if you go.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, where the where the orange cones, oh, okay.
No, no, so i- if you if you go north um on.
Yep.
On River Road on the left side.
Where Lamphier Lane goes off to the right, there's fields.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Thirteen acres.
Thirteen acres.
Well, does that mean that um, does that mean that Setford got thirteen acres?
No, the the New London, Connecticut got.
It's down at the base of the.
It's outside of the Wilder Dam, yeah.
And that's stuff that that's all surveyed, not not estimation.
And that's prime, like nationally, uh, prime axoal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wow.
Um, all right, so uh moving, so shoreline, what what do people think about it?
You could get insurance for something like that.
Maybe.
But losing your land, I don't think they insure land.
I don't think so.
Somebody might. I'm in the same boat as with wetlands myself, so if somebody else wants to.
Yeah, I mean, shoreline these days.
I think the argument is even stronger than wetlands.
Yeah.
A lot of times wetlands aren't particularly attractive or, you know, they're s- they can be swampy sort of.
Yeah, but they're still functional.
Yeah.
But shoreline is is so vulnerable now.
And it has an aesthetic value.
But two hundred feet from the top of the bank along the Connecticut River, that's a heck of a setback.
That's why I was asking about that, but, you know, the state regulates um structures, um principal buildings, I think it's only fifty feet, but they do regulate like two hundred fifty feet, so it's like, I think, and I think this was adopted before the shoreline protection ordinance too, so.
Yep, it was, um, I wouldn't um change anything just because you're gonna start um interfering with the the state shoreline protection. And so you may, it just gets people confused when.
The state the state overrules us.
Well, there's there's cutting limitations.
Right.
In the shoreline protection ordinance, the statewide one, and um, so if we're encouraging people to put pan- solar panels there, they're gonna be running up against that statewide policy of cutting, and the cutting is, you know, it wouldn't be sufficient that what they allow is trimming limbs and.
Right.
Not taking down trees.
So you wanna cut within the shoreline district, you actually have to map out all your trees.
Right.
Show the density of your trees, show what you're taking out.
Yeah.
And provide.
That they can do that because they're the state, we can't, we could never do that, anything structured like that.
Well, you can't, you can't regulate cutting.
Right.
Right, but the uh the the point I'm trying to make is that i- if the town regulations are more lenient than the state.
State.
Well, the state rules, but um you know, people get in trouble and they say, well, the town let me do it.
Right.
So it is uh just a a bad uh plan to make the the town ordinance is more lenient than the state's, because.
I'm gonna suggest we should say no to shoreline district.
I'm gonna agree with you.
I got no problem with that.
All right, ax soils.
Cash that around and everybody's like, okay.
Ax soils.
I I think micro.
I'm I'm okay with micro.
Um, I I would ask that you look at it or consider um trying to, you know, prevent it from being just, someone put a tracker, smack dab in the middle of a field.
Oh, no, no, no.
You know, say something about um.
And it clo- to the closest, the least invasive closest to the.
Right, because, you know, again, you don't, you know, if you um you know, you're not gonna be tilling, hopefully not tilling deep enough to get, but, you know, a uh the power cables are gonna run about two feet underground. And, you know, now you're starting to get to where you're, you could, you know, if you're trying to plow deep, you could start getting close to interference.
Again, using like the the size of the Hartman case, and you've spoken to me about this, where where somebody just wants a small intrusion, it's the best place and, you know, let's just give it to them. But and and as you say, we we should create criteria so somebody doesn't use that, so I'm sticking this right in the middle of this farmland field because I can.
But there but there are appeals processes for saying this is not actually agricultural, prime agricultural soil, isn't there?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
If you have a soil scientist and come in and.
Yeah, 'cause 'cause a lot of the soils, a lot of the survey stuff we have is planes flying over in nineteen fifty-seven.
No, a lot of the stuff that's close to roads are people who went out and sampled the soil. That's why you have the different, um, you know, where you have a two-digit, it's probably pretty good, um, soil number, three digits, not not as good. So, depends on how far it grew.
Yeah, because I relved Del did.
Yeah.
Most of that, and he's he knows, you know, the county exceedingly well.
Is he still with us?
Yes, he is.
I've never met him, but, I mean, you know, he's this fabled name, a legend.
Yes, he is.
But what is the process for determining that that an area isn't, it's designated as axoal, is it fact not?
You know, you bring in a soil soil scientist.
I would bring in a, you'd have to bring in a soil scientist who would do samples and he would look at the samples and compare them to the soils that are found in Grafton County, and he would then um say, okay, this soil is this type of soil.
And it has to be convincing, you know, I mean.
Yeah, well, he's a so, he's a licensed.
Yeah, but we we had, we have had instances where there was disagreement about that.
We we had some soil people who have uh tried to say, well, this is a soil that's not found in Grafton County and give a a soil that's found in Merrimack County, it's like, well.
We we collected it in Grafton County.
So, but anyway, that's really.
Their classification.
There is a, there is a process for it and and that will, you know, if people wanna do that, that can play out, but for our purposes, we're agreed with about the micro with criteria, which I also agree with.
And, you know, when you look at ax soils, there will never be a area of ax soil, or type of ax soil, less than three acres. They didn't go down any smaller than that, so there's always a possibility that you have inclusions of other types of soil, and so having a soil scientist come in and say, no, this is this little area that comes out that's not ax soil.
Right.
And so I will take their maps over the the Grafton, because, you know, they they have boots on the ground surveying that area.
And there's a, there's an exemption for, in the zoning ordinance, for an acre, if you have an acre or less, it's not a problem.
Right.
There's another guy, um, Joe Homer is still doing work, and he worked with uh government honey soil survey, and he's still around.
So like if you have a a lot that's an acre or less, it it doesn't come into play, or if you have five a- five acres, five acres and you have an acre of ax oil on those five acres, it doesn't come into play. And as always, David, correct me.
Yeah, no, it's uh.
Is that right?
Yep, um, so continuous units of agricultural soil under one acre are well, actually, go back, it's uh, it's talking about what's excluded. Excluding building zones, which are, it's two hundred feet around a primary building existing prior to zoning, so if you got a house on ax soils prior to zoning, that two hundred feet around that house is exempt. And that might be something to consider with your um, with the rules.
The criteria.
For the criteria is keeping it within two hundred feet.
That's a good idea.
Um, just because that's already.
Right, it's it's.
In the zoning for, you know, if you are, if it's a pre-zoning.
All right, anything else on ag?
Um, any, even the micro, would that count toward your whatever amount of disturbance that you're allowed to have? Is it up to twenty percent of the ax oil might be used or?
Well, it did, if you are trying to get the twenty-five or up to the twenty-five percent, there's also a special exception that allows up in, well, in the rural district, um, it's uh, I don't think it matters in Lime Common and Lime Center, because those are completely excluded from.
It's in play.
And the the business district also, I don't think, has ax soils. You're allowed by special exception up to a thousand square feet. And uh we just had one with in the zoning board that for a tracker that was in ax soils and the board looked at it as the the two square feet that the uh base of the tracker was going to.
So they they did include it in their calculation?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
But at two square feet.
At two square feet, which is that's all.
All right, so is.
So none of the trenching?
The trenching, they considered underground.
Oh, so you disturb it and it go away, but that doesn't matter.
Yep.
Which is, does matter, the soil profile is like really important. Um, that should be included, I think we are definition. I think we are definition includes all the accoutrement. It's not just the thing that produces the power in what's deemed to be a system.
Yeah, well.
But this is on a lot that there is not enough ag soils to really do anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, and it was very close to the driveway, but because the entire lot was ag soils. You know, the trenching itself was actually most of it was going to go along the driveway. Something else I was gonna say about.
Okay, so ag soils were were agreed about the micro with criteria, anything else?
And otherwise, the regular rules for ag soils apply.
What do people?
You can put a barn there, but not that, you can't quite go that way because ag soils, if you are putting a barn for agricultural purposes, that would be allowed. Okay, a shed, a a garage, I mean.
Right.
Does any other clarify?
Okay, right.
Pulling me off the wires, okay.
So David, what are what are your thoughts about applying the special exceptions, essentially adding what would be larger arrays?
To ag soils? Yeah, I mean, that seems inconsistent with the with the restriction that exists on ag soils.
I mean, the objective.
You put those kind of rays in, you're not gonna ever, it's gonna be very difficult to recover that property for agriculture use. Unless there's some way to to co-use a property where you have solar arrays and it's being used for agriculture. And I I don't seem to see that happen.
Happens occasionally.
People run sheep under them all the time, apparently.
Although although I will, I mean, we started out this whole conversation saying if you could put a shed or a garage there, it would make sense to put solar panels there, and so.
Well, we put, the ag soil, it's more restrictive. You can put agricultural uses there, but you can't put your shed or your garage unless you're living.
Sure, okay. You can you can use up to twenty five percent of it.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, I'm happy with the ag soils. Yeah, any other?
I mean, so I'm I'm, so do you wanna say, right now, there there's by uses, solar is not included in the special exceptions?
Right.
So do you want it included in the in the special exceptions?
To allow them to go on ag soil.
Up to twenty five percent.
Yes, of the ag soil.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't think that there's any reason why it should be treated differently than if someone has a tent or or their garage. Should be the same.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
I mean, I.
Makes sense.
I don't wanna encourage it, but I don't see why we do something different.
So we add to special exceptions. So I think it's reasonable, but I just wanna think about that some more.
Okay, well, we're just pushing about right now.
So.
I mean, and if we don't, then we shouldn't allow the other things either.
Yeah, no, the only thing I wanna think about is is the distinction in the use. But in, yeah, I mean, it it makes sense. All right, flood.
You.
No.
Okay.
No. In case you need me to weigh.
Okay, Ridge and Hillside.
My belief is that the Ridge Line and Hillside District is good as it stands.
Okay. Meaning that that that, what do you mean by that?
Well, with other than the exception is, I think it would be handy to go back to table four one, which is a listing of all the releases.
What page is that?
Twenty, page twenty?
Yep.
And I would maybe under residential add solar energy systems. And then when you get to the the business or get to large systems under business, if you allow them, but.
But all all large systems wouldn't necessarily be be business, would they, by definition? There could be.
Well, there could be, but it it either would be residential or business.
Okay.
Residential, it might be a net metered for a group of people, but I would consider that still going to residential. But if you put that in the table.
Yep.
Then it's becomes a permitted use.
Under.
Is under table four one, that lists your use.
Yeah, I don't think it is a residential use. I mean, if it's an accessory to the residential use, then it's allowed as an accessory use.
Or maybe have another category of solar energy systems.
Well, I think it should be business in the larger systems or.
But I I'm thinking of.
Or make it another category.
Yeah, we might have an other category or just a category.
Put it in as a permitted use, because then when you go to the Ridge Line District, then it becomes allowable as a permitted use. But you have to follow the the rules of the district, which is that if it's allowed in the underlying district, if such use will not be inharmonious when viewed from the town's public highways, public water. So then you can say, okay, it's permitted use, and is it gonna stick out like a sore thumb or not? And whereas if you don't have it as a permitted use, then somehow you have to have it either a special exception or site plan review, which again, now you're sending people to the zoning board.
Well, they're going, will they be going to the zoning board anyway?
No, because if it's a permitted use.
Yeah.
Then I have to make the determination.
Yeah, I mean, along ridge lines.
Well.
I mean, for the same reason, we don't want them on steep slopes, we want them down as we're causing visual problems.
There are, if you look at the ridge line map, there are, it it is the ridge line, and then it comes down to the roads or extends out. There are cases, I can show you a field, a flat field on River Road that's in the ridge line or has areas in the ridge line district. You know, there there is a ridge line above it, but.
But it gets caught up in it.
But it gets caught up in it, and so.
That's different, that's like fixing a problem with the definition by.
And I can tell you that Rich Mengi's system is in the Ridge Line District. I chose to call it an accessory use because it's powering his sugar house, so it's an accessory to his agricultural use. And it's permitted.
So.
But I didn't make him go to the zoning board because you can't see it. I I went up there and looked and we.
So my my question is, I I get that that, you know, there's some absurdities there.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of absurdities.
Yeah, it's unavoidable.
Yeah.
If you're gonna have a, if you're gonna have a.
Ag soils trying to figure out whether it's been subdivided. So I'm gonna keep bringing up.
So the ten year rule?
Yeah.
We've we've been over that, you know, there's been no consensus to change it. I mean, we could, we spent like six months on it once.
Yep.
And ended up, ended up nowhere. But the ten, at this point, the ten year rule is basically not in play.
Plus for.
So it's it's irrelevant, it's not a problem.
So the other thing is, is Hillside and Ridge Line is not in table four point one, so it's not gonna be solved in that way.
Yeah, so.
But it, yes, it will be, because it's permitted uses are those allowed or permitted by special exception or site plan review in the underlying district.
Okay, but here's my question.
The underlying district is not single dwelling, it's not clinic.
No, the underlying district is the rural district.
Okay, great, yeah, I get you now, thank you.
My question is, my assumption is we're gonna have a pretty enthusiastic response. Positive response.
Really?
I that, I have.
To the large solar?
Hold it, let's put down bets right now.
Yeah.
I don't think you're gonna get that, I think you're gonna be, people won't really accept all of that.
I am so consistently wrong that however I bet, you should bet the opposite. But, okay, let's say that we have an enthusiastic response. I'm I'm equally probably wrong, but I I think equally that let's say if there's a a a positive response, I also think people are gonna be very concerned about appearance. One way or the other. They don't, they don't wanna see it from here, they don't wanna see it from there. That's something that I've heard a lot. So to just make it in the Ridge Line areas and the Hillside areas, you know, it's in the table, go ahead.
No, no, that's not how it would work.
Still special except.
No, it's not a special, but.
It's not a special exception.
I mean, site plan review, sorry.
If it, if it's a permitted use or, you know, allowed use.
Right.
It is still subject to, will not be inharmonious when viewed from the town's public highways and public waters.
But that would, it would just be administrative.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean.
And, you know, again, if you're going to, you know, allow, again, we're talking small, you know, cuz you're talking about any of the large going through a conditional use permit. So there is going to be review and.
So again, let's use the two thousand square feet.
Yep, so I would look at that, and the first thing I'd say is, is it going to be viewed? Can you see it from a road or waterway? And I will make the the applicant prove that it is not or is barely visible or is visible from a very short area. You know, if you're putting it on the top of Pinnacle, then I'm going to say, no, that's not inharmonious.
That is inharmonious.
Or it is, it's sorry, is inharmonious and denied.
Okay, but it would not go to special exception on this, it would not go to the zone.
They could, well, they could, you know, anything I have to say.
They can appeal.
They can appeal.
Right. But I, it will not, that will not be the the first step.
That will not be the first step, it'll go through my review first. And then, you know, again, we'll take Rich Mengi's system, you look at that. You might be able to see it from, for a second or two on Route ten.
I haven't, I've never seen it.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, looking at the, you know, we put up some stakes to and flags to the height and.
Even even when all the waves are down.
So what happens? For instance, where, just as a general, I'm asking this as a general question for if and when we have to determine things like that for with screening. If if, say, somebody has a bunch of trees that are there.
Yeah.
And they die, they get blown down, or they cut them down. Is that, it's, what what happens then?
I wouldn't consider the trees as a blocking. That's, when I look at the that, I I'm looking at bare ground. Given for Rich Mengi's, when you go through that area on Route ten, you're going through a cut.
Yeah.
And so you're well below grade and he's high enough up that you're not.
From from there, but what if you're up on Pinnacle or, you know, you're on Pinnacle Road or something?
Then I would wanna, you know, again, I would look at a line of sight analysis that shows without trees, which is a very simple.
If those are the criteria that, you know.
That's my criteria.
Yeah.
That, you know, and I even have, you know, I have the ability to do a line of sight analysis, so I can say, you know, here's the the panels, how high are they gonna be off the ground? I set a point off the ground, and then I say, okay, what can be, where can you see this point from?
So what would be a, either a neighbor or a citizen's remedy if the zoning administrator says, yeah, I looked at this and this looks okay for me? And they say, what?
They would, they would have to do what, they could, they could appeal my decision to the the ZBA.
Okay.
It was just roadways and waterways, right? It's not the neighbor's house.
Right, no, it's roadways and water, well, it's actually, I guess, a little bit, but it's it's broader than the neighbors.
The criteria even for the zoning board is roadways and waterways.
Right.
Well, but you might not be able to see it from roadways and waterways, but you might be able to see it from the neighbor's house.
Right, it's kind of weird, yeah.
So can I ask a question about the definition?
So somebody from another part of town, that's what I'm saying, if somebody from another part of town might be really upset where I as a neighbor will go, oh, I don't care about that.
I wanted to ask a question about the Ridge Line. So you either take the point, the the peak, and then you measure a thousand feet around it?
I think that's, I'd have to look at the definition.
Yeah, I was looking at that.
Yeah.
And then, and then if it's a ridge, you measure a thousand feet, either, a thousand horizontal feet, and that's the Ridge Line District?
I believe that's how they, this was built before my time.
Yep.
And then there is a setback from the roads that is excluded.
Okay, and then, but it's, you know, for example, a parcel that's on Route ten that can be seen. You know, you can see some, the house from Route ten, that's not in the Ridge Line District because it's nowhere near the Ridge Line.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to.
So we've we've established something here and we'll.
Good.
We'll, yeah, we'll revisit it once we get the the questionnaire back. So our next meeting is, what is the date, the twenty eighth?
Uh, I think so.
Twenty eighth, so.
Yes.
We're not gonna have the returns by now.
Okay.
So do we wanna, we wanna cancel the twenty fifth, but we wanna add something when we're certain that we're gonna be able to do a count. When do you think we can, we can have a reliable? What would you say is a good date for us to schedule?
Hard for me to say right now, just because if I get this back and I I tell them go tomorrow, which I'm not, because I'm gonna call Nomen first, and it might take Nomen. Yeah, that's, I'm calling him on a Friday, I wouldn't expect to hear them back from.
They've been pretty good about getting back.
So so here's a possibility of how to approach it with Nomen, is that if you can guarantee that we'll have it by X day, it's your job. And pick the date.
Yep.
And who knows with staples, I mean.
What date did you put on the letter?
I wanna say it was, I'm gonna look at my calendar. I think it was October, I think it was like October second.
For the return?
Yeah.
So assuming.
So that's two weeks before that would be.
Planning on sending it, giving them everyone two weeks to look at?
Two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, but again, I was hoping to have it out last week.
Yeah.
Not next week.
So then, a week after October second, have a counting meeting.
Well, I guess, you know. Well, I guess, you know, because I'm gonna call Nomen tomorrow, I'm not gonna guarantee that we're gonna get it out this week, because.
If it doesn't get out this week, that would, today's the fourteenth.
Yep, so we're looking at, um, earliest.
Twenty-first?
Yeah, the twenty-first.
The earliest that.
Yeah, next Thursday.
Yep.
That it would go out?
Yeah.
So then two weeks from next Thursday is what? The date is what?
Let's see, it's the fifth.
The fifth.
Which is a week before you have a meeting.
So.
I would just look at it as a twelfth, um, at your regular meeting.
Start counting.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, I, I, um, again, I'll reiterate, the way this is going, we're gonna have extra meetings if we.
Yeah.
And I, my personal, uh, goal is to get this thing done this year, no matter what. So just everybody be prepared with the way this is going to have extra meetings. All right, thank you, um, this was good, and onward and upward.
Move to adjourn?
That was the move. It was, it was just done subtly.
Subtle movement, nevermind.
Different language. So I, I have a question, I subscribe to a planning board mailing list.